And then concluding the order, please rise your pledge and remain standing in front of the silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a member in silence for first responders who have given their all for our deployed military. Thank you. Two minutes, five minutes, four seconds. Public comment for agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment for agenda items?
Did we just raise our hands or? Good evening, New Freedom Borough Council, Council President Bobby, Vice President Ross, Mayor Butcher, Borough Manager Schaefer, and others. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on the topic of the proposed rental ordinance tonight. I was unable to locate any draft legislation on the Borough website in preparation for tonight's meeting, but in searching for it, Google's AI had some pretty good recommendations, as well as reasons for why rental ordinance is advisable. Recommendations that came up during my search, which can easily be found by simply Googling the words "New Freedom Rental Ordinance," AI called its output key elements of a New Freedom PA Rental Agreement. According to computer-generated recommendations, a few of the bullet points outline tenant rights, tenant rights, in which it stated that tenants have the right to a safe and habitable dwelling and that landlords must maintain their rental properties in a safe, sanitary, and livable condition. And further, the agreement should make clear things such as who is responsible for repairs, maintenance, and landscaping. Without rehashing the past too much, as you know, we and several of our neighbors endured a very long and hellish pest situation due to one of the adjoining units in our set of row homes. As you know, we are all pest-free and have been since the Borough stepped in to help almost a year and a half ago. We thank you sincerely. Living through that was absolute hell, absolute hell. And things got, were exacerbated by the fact that it wasn't entirely clear precisely who was responsible for mitigating the pest issue if ever, or even at all, meaning between the landlord and the tenant and the whole court thing, which I'm not going to get into. Moreover, when the previous tenant, whose home was overrun with roaches, asserted that she had received professional pest services to mitigate the issue, while also sometimes denying that she had a problem at all, it was found to be untrue on several occasions. Although the landlord had been advised of this fact, she failed to visit and inspect her own property a single time, which allowed the pest situation to fester and eventually get completely out of control, which is why we came to the Borough for help. In this case, not only was the landlord failing to maintain a safe and clean and healthy living environment for her unit, but there was no ordinance which could have compelled her to even do so or to even inspect her unit. As you're aware, the repercussions of this had a wider neighborhood or community impact, which cost her neighbors, such as myself, a great deal of money, loss of property, time, time with family and friends, loss of happiness and enjoyment of our own homes. Jumping ahead to today, that same landlord is still absent, and her tenants, though off-topic for tonight's topic, are now squatting there, which has presented a whole new set of challenges that David might be touching on tonight. The landlord leased her unit to these tenants while in the middle of the roach remediation graciously paid for by you, the Borough. Those were certainly not safe and healthy living conditions at the time, which even disgusted the pest company that you hired. But the landlord, even after all she had allowed this neighborhood to go through without her involvement, leased her subpar property to a family with a young toddler. Maybe out of greed or desperation, either way, she allowed people to move into those conditions for $1,200 per month. I am not a landlord nor a tenant. I own my own property, along with the majority of residents, on Buena Vista Street. If you take the drive, you will quickly be able to spot those who take pride in their homes, nearly all of us, whether owner-occupied like myself or rented, versus those who don't really take care of their homes. Without being told, you'll be able to very clearly see a stark contrast between a couple of the units and the rest of us who care about where we live. And that's just the outside of the units. I can't imagine the inside. New Freedom is a great place to live. There are so many things the Borough does very well, exceptionally well. From savvy citizen that keeps us informed, to being a railroad train tourist destination, to the decorations during the holidays, to the very well-organized and fun events, to the community's generous spirit. In my opinion, this is such a well-run little township, and despite the terrible things that I and others have lived through while living next to what I will call your weakest link. This is undoubtedly due in great part to the negligence of some property owners, some property owners and landlords, and an absence of clarity about who is responsible and for what. One last point I would like to make before I close. As luck or bad luck would have it, just this past Saturday, the aforementioned unit, the former roach house of which I spoke previously, had a cooking mishap. We all had this happen from time to time. In this case, their unit apparently filled up with so much smoke due to an unreported stove top fire. You could hear the tenants coughing and hacking out back as they yelled across the house to open up the windows and doors. One tenant took whatever was burning, ran it out to the fire pit outside, and doused it with water. Thankfully, they were fortunate that day, as we all were, their adjacent neighbors, as well as other neighbors in our block of row homes. Nothing got out of control. But there was one thing that was eerily present that day, and that was the sound of silence of something pretty important. Missing from that ordeal was the sound of fire alarms. Not a single fire alarm went off on Saturday in their unit, not a one. And I'm willing to bet that, considering all of the other negligence that has occurred there over the years, that the Boroughs had to hear about from us and others and had to deal with, that that same unit does not have a single fire alarm with a toddler there. I ask, who would be responsible for that if something were to happen that needed to get the attention of said tenants or adjacent neighbors like us? I lived in a county several years ago in which similar legislation was introduced, passed, and eventually enacted. I recall that there was pushback against it from developers and the large property management companies, both of whom don't actually have to live in the units they lease. Well, not all property owners are negligent. I'm here to say that some are. And I and others have and continue to personally have to live it daily by merely residing next to some of them. Developers don't. If conditions are safe and clean for their tenants, then there would be nothing to fear, wouldn't there? In closing, I support a rental ordinance for New Freedom. Oversight of the rental relationship between landlord and properties tenants reside in is good for the tenant and also for the wider community. I ask that you please be proactive about enacting something that makes sense for this community, an ordinance that includes mandatory safety inspections that are specific to the health and safety of occupants, such as fire alarms, ventilation, mold, and the like, which are things that can also impact immediate neighbors, not to mention ultimately bring down the community and the township. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dan, I think when you're...
Stating fire alarms should mean smoke detectors.
I mean smoke detectors, that's what I meant, you're right.
Any, any kind of ordinance that can be passed is better than nothing at all. Hearing our neighbors cooking and throwing stuff outside, screaming at each other, not picking up their stuff, stuff that has been there since I moved in a couple of years ago, is still sitting in the same spots. Nothing has been done to clean it up at all. Summertime, you can walk back there, the grass is going to be probably up to their kneecaps. It's not grass, it's weeds. They're not going to cut it until somebody says something to them about it. Any ordinance would be appreciated for anything, if it involves safety, cleanliness, what have you. All I've got.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I can see none. Next item up is approval of minutes for the regular meeting, March 10. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the March 10, 2025 meeting minutes.
Motion in a second, discussion, corrections?
On page four, for the recreation report, I have requested monthly financials and a continuation date for their meetings, for them to have that discussion, for that to be set. Also, Mayor, under EMS, reported that a new fire truck had been ordered and will arrive in two to three years.
Anything else? Want to amend your motion?
I make a motion to...
She can make a motion to amend it if she has a second.
That the fire truck has been ordered, it'll be here in two to three years, and that it was requested to have monthly financials for the recreation, as well as have them set a continuation meeting.
Motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Seconding?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. Motion in a second to amend to include the fire truck and also the financials for recreation. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Vote as a no.
No.
I vote as aye. Approval of the treasures report dated March 2025. Oh, we still have to approve the first one? Okay. Okay. With the amendment, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Yeah, you want a new motion and a second.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, again?
You're still going to need a new motion and a second.
Right.
Because that was the first motion, failed.
Yeah, and so we amended the second motion, so I have to do it. Only motion to amend minutes.
Okay. I thought we had done that, but okay. I will, I will accept the motion and entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended by our previous motion.
Make the motion, second.
Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I vote as aye.
Sorry about that.
We've got to make sure, we've got to make sure we didn't finish.
Dot the Ts and cross the Is on that one, I guess, okay. Approval of the treasure report pending audit for March 2025. Entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Motion in a second, are there any questions?
I've had one on page 25. It said cleaning service, SINTOS, for $985. Would that be Swift Cleaning or is it something different?
Those are, that's not necessarily cleaning service, that's paper towels, toilet paper, soap, hand sanitizer, air freshener. Yeah, so that's just...
So the heading is just the same cleaning service?
Yeah.
It's the same account?
Cleaning supplies, cleaning service, yeah.
Is it able to say supplies instead of service, like it does for the cleaner?
We can, I think there's already an account, line item for that, so I think it might just be a reclassification on that.
You could tell by the vendor, yeah, it would be easier to Uber it now. Anything else?
Page 15. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this before. EMS service supply, $17,000, what is that? WC...
Workers' comp.
Hambo?
Yeah, that was the workers' comp.
Okay.
The WC is workers' comp.
Okay. And the street signs supply, $2,300, what did we get for that?
What page are you on?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. That just would have been general stock, so it could have been post signs, bases, not installers.
Was that anything for the, like, the Lions company?
No, that's just would have been.
Okay.
Signage.
All right, and the EMS...
Okay, that's the workers' comp final audit. That has to be audited, what, annually?
Correct.
What, my phone, sorry. Okay, and... I saw a couple of other, fire supply, Aero Energy, fire, what's that, fire reg?
Regular fuel for the fire company. So they get regular fuel and diesel fuel.
Okay, that's for the regular fuel. And then Fuel Cloud is what they pull from down here at our tank.
Yep.
Okay, that's good, thanks, I just, well, that's a lot.
Anything else?
Is that, oh, I'm sorry.
Not for me, no.
Is, is the generator up yet, though? Is that pretty well finished up now?
No. No, we have the generator, we're working with Columbia Gas to get the new service line, and once that's finalized, it'll be, the old generator will be pulled off, new one put on, and then we'll be working with the electric contractor to get that connected and finished up, so.
Somewhere it said installation, did they pre, did we prepay for installation?
Paid for the purchase.
It said installation.
Oh, the generator.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, there, no, he's saying there's a generator installed for $742, that's not the whole...
Oh, that was, that was to actually get it off the truck and spot it with the crane service.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a big one, I saw it, it's...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for taking care of that, it's much appreciated to the community and the fire hall.
Questions? All in favor of approving the treasures report dated March 25 pending audit, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That is aye. Stormwater channel on North Constitution?
So we are going to be working with the engineer to close that out. We just need to do a final inspection and make sure everything's cleaned up. Public Works has been monitoring that swale at the end of every storm, just to make sure it's cleaned out. So we'll work with the contractor to close that out, as well as the engineer. We'll have to close that joint with the Army Corps of Engineers.
All right.
Will seating take place?
We had a call with the, with the contractor, and it basically, at this point, has reseated pretty much everything. So we're going to do that final inspection and make sure it's good, that it's not some spot seating that will need to be done, it'll be done shortly.
Paul Smith Library, I spoke with Buck today, there's really no update. We've had no response back from the library board, York County Library Systems Board, and we've had no response back from the county commissioners. So the next step is the Shrewsbury Borough Solicitor, Jeff Raymeyer, is going to contact the board directly to see if he can't force a meeting. So that would be the next step. As soon as I hear something back, I will let everybody know. The other item on the agenda for Paul Smith is consider authorizing release of the April 25 allocation in the amount of $1,000. We are, Paul Smith is still a member library, they're not a branch library, so the money would go directly to Paul Smith for their use. So I would entertain a motion to authorize the release of the $1,000 funding to Paul Smith Library.
Make the motion to release $1,000 for April 25?
Second. Any discussion?
Were they supposed to have a communication back to us between the last meeting and now, as far as the York County?
They were, we sent them a letter requesting a meeting and requesting that it be a public meeting, open to whoever wants to attend. They've just not responded.
I thought that was supposed to be before today.
Yeah, it was supposed to be before today, but no one has responded, so. I have a motion in a second to authorize release of the funding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I vote as aye.
Next item is solar energy facilities decommissioning bond, the draft language that we had requested. Does anyone have any comments on the, on the draft?
This won't apply to the current facility, right?
Unless they lapsed, and then they have to reapply.
When is their current permit expired? And I know they're working on their second.
I would say they're, I'd have to double-check, but I'd say they're probably close to being six months into their second permit extension, well, their first permit extension.
So my question would be, can they get a third extension, or is that it?
They can be granted, the land development plan would be valid for five years. So even if they would have to go back and get a new permit, the land development plan is still good.
Okay.
Which is what...
And they would not fall under this...
Correct.
At any time, within five years?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Unless they were to...
Start all over?
...break the land development plan and completely change the layout, then they would have to go back to square one, and then this would...
Completely, but if they made small changes, is there type gray areas?
Well, it's permitted at this point. It would have to be how substantial the changes, as long as they won't impact any kind of coverage, setback, add anything additional, for additional purpose.
It would have to be something that would trigger a new permit.
And this would just shorten to six months?
Yeah, the two comments were to change on G1A. It was the open spot for three months, period of three continuous months. However, if the SEF had notified, Borough may suspend this three-month period. And then on the back, the last one, D, it was six months, and that they could authorize a one-three-month extension. That was what was discussed at the last meeting.
So do we need an action, it is time to pass this as an ordinance? Draft that is a ordinance?
This is just to send to, because this is a zoning amendment, so the next step would be to send this to York County Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. Then it would have to come back for Borough Planning Commission, and it would come back to council then, and after that for a public hearing, and then a pass. So zoning amendments take a little bit of time to be reviewed.
So I would consider a motion authorizing submission to York County Planning Commission for their review, which is the next step in the process.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second to authorize submission to York County Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I vote as aye.
Senior Center... Oh, this is, yeah, this is the information requested by Borough for the number of users of the Senior Center, so that's provided. And then we have a draft review, which is marked up in blue.
Yeah, there was a request at the last meeting for the number of residents that are members of the Senior Center, so that's the first document. The second request was for contributions from local municipalities. That is the second document that you have tonight. And then the third document is the lease. And again, I apologize for being a little busy with colors, but I was trying to identify what was amended, the first time from last meeting. And then blue is what was changed. Hopefully I captured everything there that was discussed at the last meeting.
You're actually, I like having the colors to have that kind of context.
That's actually good.
There's a lot of extra work, but...
First of all, I was just trying to make sure I got everything. Trying to go through and reconcile all of it.
Personally, I'd like to see it, but...
Can you change Cindy Bosley, I think she's retired, off of Shrewsbury?
These aren't, these aren't my records.
No, 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 on the second page.
I, I, right, these are not my records, these are the Senior Center records.
Oh.
You, council asked for a copy of information of what is received, and this is what was provided by the Senior Center. Just like Kate Harry's not at Hopewell.
Would we be good neighbors in letting them know that she's no longer...
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't, I wasn't going to change the document that's provided by somebody else.
Brian's now the Borough Manager.
Make a motion to change this to a submittal at this point, or are we still... Are you approved with the changes made? Or do you want to go through it again?
I don't think, because it's not on the agenda, I just wanted the opportunity to make sure that before we send this back to the Senior Center that we're not missing anything that council would like to see.
Without making a motion, then, does anyone have any comments on the draft changes that have been made?
Refreshing my mind, they were the ones that requested two-year?
They requested five.
Oh, five.
You changed it to two, you know, immediately.
I think the initial period for two years is five, but I just don't think that the annual should be for two. Basically, walking in for years there. And on page two, I had requested with the prior lease for the tenant in that building to have it spelled out exactly what each item was, and was told that that couldn't be done, but that is appearing here in this lease.
But what are you asking again?
I asked for this to be in the other lease, and was told no, that you can't tell them what each item is and what you're not putting in the lease, but I see it here in this lease.
So that's a thank you for putting it in?
Let's take it then.
What, what are the hours of the Senior Center? Is it seven to four? Because I think we talked like an hour before, an hour after, so it would be six to five, or...
Seven to four will cover before and after.
That will.
Yeah, the concern was that there might be a time when the directors... Yeah. The concern was that there might be a time when the director's in there before or after, or on the weekend for a special event. That's why we added that. There's a couple clarifying words there, but-
Do they have board meetings at any, I think once a month?
Off of the, just, off of the municipality summary, over a thousand participants. New Freedom is barely 22% of that, and the other municipalities will fully under contribute to that community center.
I'm sorry, you said what, they under?
Yeah, I, I don't think-
Do we know what their contributions are?
It's on that paper.
It's more than what we contribute, I think.
Well, actually, no, because we are giving them a very good deal on a building to have space to be there. Our infrastructure is used, our parking lot is used. We do contribute greatly outside of writing a check and handing it to them.
Do we give them a donation at all during the year? Is that in the budget?
I thought we did, like-
Obviously, no. Two hundred dollars was what?
No.
Somebody else.
I think you're thinking of the community services, which are, is the three-year, right? Southern York County Community, Community Services.
So to use nearly 5,000 square feet for what they are paying, we, we contribute greatly to them, and being here and the community, use of our-
I was just asking if we contribute. I thought we did. Minor, I know Shrewsbury Borough, Shrewsbury Township does contribute. So that helps them pay the rent, I would assume.
Anything else?
You haven't presented this to them yet, right?
Not with the changes that are outlined or highlighted in blue, no.
Do we need a motion to do that? So you will just do that, you will make sure they have this, and then hopefully we'll have a response and can verify what next.
So you're going to submit this?
Put it on the agenda for next month.
Then I get part of it to be that we're able to approve that in May, or June at the latest.
Put on both, yeah.
I guess I would, I mean, the one thing I would do, I would like to at least go on record, is saying, you know, I think that giving to the Senior Center to, to allow them to exist, to allow the community involvement of the aging population, it's very, it's very important. I mean, most culture, cultures do this. I do agree that other municipalities that have members in the Senior Center should pay their fair share. However, I consider it an honor that the Senior Center is in New Freedom, and that we are able to provide them with a home location. New business.
Well, I have, I have one question. I don't know, I guess this would have to be a question for the Senior Center, but there's obviously not a thousand-plus people going in there every day. Is this mules-on-wheels? Is this a combination of both?
I think those are just members of the Senior Center.
Who are just on-paper members?
Yeah.
Which would, I would assume includes mules-on-wheels?
Yes, okay. So I think that's a, I think that's a somewhat important distinction to make, that if, if that is true, not all of these people are physically using the building. They're benefiting from the services of things like mules-on-wheels, since they have an area to, to prep these.
That's a very good point, yeah. I mean, some of them are homebound and can't even make it to the Senior Center, and they're just using the service of the mules-on-wheels.
And hopefully that'll be able to continue, because there's some concern that with some funding cuts, they may not be able to carry on with it.
Yeah.
For the record, I have no objections of the Senior Center being there. It's just with increases across the board, everywhere, to lock in a price for four years, could be...
No, I agree with that. Okay, new business. Consider approval of the loan from Borasco, probably saying it wrong, Excavation Incorporated in the amount of $233,000 for the Daly Avenue Stormwater Infrastructure Upgrade Project. And keep in mind that 100% of this reimbursement is coming from a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, so this is not tax dollars. It's required work, but it's being paid for by grant.
I'm moving to approve the low bid from Borasco at Excavation, consistent with the recommendation from Murillo.
Second.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Yeah.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of the purchase of a bandit brush chipper from Steffensen Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $61,950. 95% of that reimbursed will be reimbursed from a Section 902 grant, so only 5% would be from the general fund tax dollars. Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval of the brush chipper, chipper from Steffensen Equipment for the amount of $61,950, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
What are we doing with the old chipper?
We will sell it when we disbit, once we have the new one.
And that'll go towards the 5% difference?
That'll go back into the capital reserve.
Okay. So that'll hopefully pay for the balance.
How old is this chipper?
Ninety, ninety-four. I thought it was a ninety-four, yeah.
Does the, does the new one throw the chips into the truck better than the old one? Jake, have you looked at it? I know, I mean, I appreciate it coming with a bye, but I've got to wash my car every time it goes by, because the leaves just are shredded and end up everywhere over the cars.
That's the leaf machine.
Or part of the street.
Yeah, that's definitely the chipper. I know what you mean with the leaf machine.
Oh, all right, the chipper doesn't come, go house to house?
During, during the limb pickup days.
Okay.
And not, this is leaf pickup you're talking about?
Never mind.
What are the requirements of the grant being this is tied to a grant?
Requirements of the grant are that we continue to educate the public on recycling opportunities. The grant is paying for 95% of the chipper, 50% of the backhoe, and 95% of the installation of the lawn and, well, leaf, leafy waste that we're going to install for the residents, so that they have the opportunity and ability to dispose of limbs and leaf debris, basically, year-round, rather than just at our collection.
And can you just give me an out-of-pocket after the grant?
The- For all items?
For this chipper, this out-of-pocket after the grant?
It would be 3,000, change, 3,000 or 25 dollars about, which lies in, may or indicated will most likely be supplemented when we go to sell the old one.
Do you have an idea of like what you can sell this one for?
I do not.
How often do we use it?
In the event that we have a storm, I know about two or three years ago when we had a large storm, we provided brush collection to pretty much every property, well, the majority of properties in Borough. We also have the pickups that are scheduled second and fourth Tuesdays in May, June, April, May, June, September, October? Forgot it. We're getting the thumbs up in the back. And we will also use it with the installation of those bins for year-round collection, so we'll actually get more use going forward.
It's going to be put on a predictive maintenance schedule?
Yeah, all of the equipment is.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, the next up is consider approval of a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement for the County Board of Appeals. And we were trying to figure out when we joined. We think we joined this about two years ago. This resolution would allow, I hesitate to say less qualified, but that's basically it, less qualified people to be on the board. You would not have to be an architect. You could be a-
Construction foreman.
Construction foreman. You would have to have some experience in construction, but you would not have to be a registered architect. It allows them to open up to accepting more applicants and to fill the positions on the appeals board. So I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution for the County Board of Appeals.
All the boroughs and counties are going to do the same thing, then? I'm moving to approve that resolution.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of the engagement agreement with Saxton and Stump. This is, we've talked about this before. There's been a merger between Saxton and Stump. Buyout or merger?
Oh, a merger?
Merger, okay. So there's been a merger between Saxton and Stump and Stock and Leader. Everything remains the same for us. The only difference is the name. This is the engagement agreement, changing the name from Stock and Leader to Saxton and Stump. I entertain a motion to accept the new, new law firm.
Make a motion that we accept the new law.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, is there any discussion or questions?
This would be a great opportunity to go out for free bids. Would we go out for any competitive bidding?
Well, this would actually be a good opportunity to wait until the first of the year to go. If you wanted to go out for bids, you could probably do that in December. I'm not sure that the, I mean, this is not really a change. This is just a change to the name, as if-
This is an opportunity we have, you know, minority opportunity, or opportunity to see if we are getting the best value for our dollar.
Are they the same fees, Andrew, that were, had before? Nothing's changed?
Fees are locked in for the entire year.
Okay, nothing's really changed in that way.
It'll be the, it'll be the same attorneys, it'll be the same fees. Really, the only thing changing is the name on it.
Good. Well, there is a second page to this. Is that inclusive of what we're voting on?
Oh, you mean the fees, but they are the same?
No, the email from, from our current solicitor. The second page, the second part.
Oh, the file, the file management.
You're talking about the one with the Stock and Leader at the header.
Yes.
Yeah, that would, that, that one was, is for file management, so-
So that is not, that is in addition to?
Yes. So that, so the file management is, is basically crossing the t's and dotting the i's, that-
We're going to use Saxton and Stump?
And also, more importantly, that the township, or, sorry, Borough is consenting to allowing us, Saxton and Stump, to use the files from Stock and Leader. Because Stock and Leader is no longer in existence.
So that's a buyout?
Are we voting on this second right here as well?
Yes.
It's, yeah, it just allows it, yeah, it just allows them to use it.
All right, then I have a question about the second one with the Stock and Leader at the header. Is it-
Wait a minute, don't we have to vote on this one first?
I was going to do it together. Do you suggest I do it separately?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll do it, we'll do it separately. I have a motion in a second to approve the name change from Stock and Leader to Saxton and Stump with the same fees. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
My vote is aye. Okay. Now, the second page allows them to use the files from Stock and Leader, being basically used by Saxton and Stump, which is the new law firm, or the joint law firm. What do you read?
That's not what I'm- That's not what we were told.
That's the file management, the second part.
Yeah, you've got it in your hand.
Right in the middle of the page?
Right. It says file management. I would entertain a motion to approve the file management or the transfer of files between Stock and Leader and Saxton and Stump.
I think you're admitting something that this is also saying that we're choosing Dave Jones as the head of Solicitor.
He's, Dave Jones isn't changing. He's already been appointed for the year.
Yeah, as the municipal chair, his name is on all of the transfer letters.
I don't have a motion yet, though.
I'll make a motion to approve the change in file management with Dave Jones as listed for Saxton and Stump.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
To me, this is almost sounding like we're signing individually. I'm assuming that's incorrect.
Signing, yeah. It's, it's a template that was set up for, not necessarily for townships, but for individual business clients, individual-
Borough? Oh, I see. It is a-
Okay, all right, that's, I mean, that's what I figured it was, but it just looked like they were asking for everybody's title, print, and name.
Gotcha.
Yeah, not necessarily-
And not necessarily the Borough, but, okay.
Yeah, just, yeah, would be the Borough.
Can we have the option to have our other solicitor, Mr. Zero, walk, oh?
Walt Tillman?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and that-
I learn more from him than I did from Dave.
Yeah, that, that, like I said, our representation won't change. I'm here tonight because Walt's in Mexico, or on the way back from Mexico, and Dave had an, had an agenda meeting, a zoning hearings or meeting, so that's why I'm here tonight. But it'll typically be the same representation. It's usually Walt, and it'll, it'll still be Walt. So that's why I'm here tonight, but it'll typically be the same representation. It's usually Walt, it'll still be Walt.
Well, it's usually Dave, but lately Walt Warne has been here, and I think if we're gonna do it, we should have Walt's name put on this as our regular solicitor. Because for Dave, it's hard. He lives in Diltsburg. It was nice when he could leave at nine o'clock. Sometimes after nine o'clock, we still need representation from a solicitor. Walt lives close by. He doesn't mind. He's already agreed that he would be more than willing to be our solicitor.
I don't disagree with you, but that's really not what, we really can't do that tonight.
Why?
Because it's not, Walt's name's not on the, I haven't spoken with Walt. I haven't spoken with Dave.
We've talked to Walt after the meeting last.
But that was an informal, like, would you like to, we like you, you like us, kind of thing. I just think we should.
You wouldn't even need anything more.
I would like to see this table until next month.
We won't be able to access your files for a month.
This is really about file sharing. It's not about, and we could change the solicitor at our next meeting. And like I said, if you had emailed me two days ago, I would have made an attempt to get this changed. But as it is right now, Dave Jones is the managing partner in charge of the municipal group. So his name being on it doesn't lock us into having a chance as a solicitor. It's just who is on this form that we got.
Okay.
So we can, we can change it, and I have no problem with doing what you're saying.
It doesn't really, it's not conducive to saying that, but if that's what you're saying.
It's still something that we could change for next month, and we could definitely.
It's just, I think, Dave's so busy, he's missed most of the meetings this year.
Except for point.
Last year.
Okay.
Can we take an agenda item for next month, please?
Absolutely. In fact, I'll take an action to, whenever Walt gets back, I'll talk to Walt and Dave and make sure that it's okay, and then we'll put on the, can we just put it on the agenda for next month to make Walt ask if, confirm, how if we put it on as confirm solicitor from Saxton and Stump?
As Walt too?
Now, we'll just confirm solicitor and then talk to them and see, make sure that they're, I want to put words in their mouth.
I just wanna make it for the record, no other surrounding municipality ever has their solicitor leave early. They consistently have the same solicitor, month after month, year after year. We have unresolved ordinance violations dating back 30 years. And we have cut lawsuits stemming from meetings when there has been a solicitor present at the meeting that is here for protection of the borough. So again, I am.
I'm not sure what the last comment was. The, you're gonna have, you can have a lawsuit. Just because a solicitor's here doesn't mean you're not going to have a lawsuit.
The solicitor is here to protect the borough. I'm not aware of surrounding municipalities being sued the number of times New Freedom has in the past few years. And I just again say this is a good opportunity to go out for competitive bidding. We didn't ask for the auditor to be removed, but we got given a packet, you know, to have the auditor replaced without the council asking. This is just an opportunity that I thought, well, maybe they're gonna have the competitive bidding.
Well, you can definitely do that in December, but it's not appropriate whenever you've made a year-long appointment. You could do it at any time, really, but this isn't a trigger for that. You can do, you can do a competitive bid anytime you want to.
And this is the opportune time?
Not really, because the motion on the table is about file management. It doesn't really have anything to do about who the solicitor's going to be, which we're going to bring up next month, which will be on the agenda. Does anyone else have any questions about file management? All in favor of approving the file management transfer between Stock and Leader and Saxton and Stump? Please say aye.
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 Ours?
No.
My vote is aye. Sir?
Too late now.
It's never too late.
Well, the floor's supposed to be open for discussion before the vote actually takes place, Mr. President. So it is too late.
The floor actually doesn't get open at all, but that's okay. Consider approval of the road closure request for a bike rodeo on August 30th.
Make a motion to close the listed road for the bike rodeo from Cub Scout Pack 24.
Any discussion?
That's a busy street. I mean, we've got businesses down there, we've got paisanos that's gonna be affected.
It doesn't go the whole way, so if you look on the back, Pisono's entrance is gonna remain open on both sides.
I did look, and that's where people park to go in to pick up pizza.
But this isn't any different than what you would have if you.
We're talking about 11 to 2 on one day.
It's not an all-day event.
I know, I'm just, I'm just a little concerned with the train and with.
They'll still be able to enter off of Main Street and go right into the parking lot. Or they're able to go right on the other side of the railroad track.
You're talking about people that are familiar with the borough. You have people from out of town coming to the train, and it just seems to me, I mean, they could take the Catholic church in the parking lot up there and do it. The Lutheran church has just as much room as this. I don't want to put anything against the Cub Scouts, other than the Boy Scouts or anything. I'm just looking out for businesses and our community effort.
It's one business from 11 to 2. Most of the people for the train also park there in the gravel.
But Chris.
They have their parking lot full from employees.
But there's another entrance in there, anyway.
Where? I don't see it on the map.
It's on the alley.
It's on the front, I think.
Okay, I see.
What about, we're letting them essentially use the borough street now? I mean, do we need to be concerned about insurance or anything?
That's my other question.
I mean, I don't have any problem with it, but, you know, I know kids aren't with bikes.
I see where you're coming from.
Usually for events like that, they'll have some kind of insurance where they name the borough as an additional insurer.
Yeah, I would think so too.
Brought forth any policies?
Should we send that back to them for that? Everybody else would make them come up with insurance.
Okay.
But I mean, I don't know. I'm just agreeing with.
I would think their existing liability policy or insurance policy would already be in place that we could just make a simple request to add the borough as additional insurer moving forward, so I don't think that's reasonable.
What's the date of this? I'm sorry.
August 30th.
Oh, so there's plenty of time. So should we table this until we know that they have that insurance? Does it mean not?
I don't see any reason to table. We, I mean, we close it, we closed the whole street and other streets during New Freedom Fest. We close areas off for the parade. I mean, this is a three-hour closure on a limited basis, and they want access apparently to the rail trail. It makes sense. I mean, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? I'm gonna call for a vote, see what happens. All in favor?
Aye.
Ours? My vote is aye. Solicitor's report? I don't have anything for this. Managers' report?
Everybody has a copy of the March 2025 managers' report as well as the grant report. If there's any questions on either of those, let me know. Just a reminder, in the kind of top section of the managers' report are the dates for the upcoming Regional Comprehensive Plan meetings. That meeting for elected officials will be April 24 at 6:00 p.m. over Shrewsbury Township, followed by a meeting with all public on May 1st, again, at Shrewsbury Township at 6:00 o'clock. Those meetings have already been advertised, and we'll be sending out information as well to the public.
A lot of information. There's a lot of information if you want to.
The actual plan itself isn't bad. It's the implementable plan that has all the data.
No, no doubt, but.
Did you get any comments from Shrewsbury Borough?
As far as.
Oh, I'm sorry, the report, the chair report?
No. No, the proportion share report has been distributed, and we have not received, and actually, we've received payments already, so.
Good.
Other than that, anybody have any questions? They can come up here.
Questions at this time? I have nothing. Mr. Mayor?
Are we there already? Okay.
We have specifics down below. If you don't have anything, generally.
No, I'll hit them on EMS. The only thing I will say is I know there was a heated discussion at the Shrewsbury Borough meeting, the last council meeting, went on for about 15 or 20 minutes from the Shrewsbury Township resident, really complaining about EDUs and the lack of EDUs for their development. Where are we with meetings for the sewer authority? Well, we don't have a sewer authority, Shrewsbury Sewer Authority and our personnel.
They have, I mean, Shrewsbury Borough has all of the assigned EDUs that they want.
But we had a meeting, didn't we, with Shrewsbury Township and Hopewell? Are they still in the mix?
They haven't come back with anything. We're waiting for them, the next step in this whole process. And then that would be a meeting that we would notify the council of. But the next step in the whole process is for Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township to come back to us and say, yes, we want to participate, and we'll raise the money, or we'll get a loan, or we'll do whatever we're gonna do to cover the.
Was there ever an agreement that said Shrewsbury Borough had to supply Shrewsbury Township with EDUs?
Yeah, that's between sewer authority, their sewer authority and council and the.
I thought when we had our sewer authority, that that was the agreement that Shrewsbury Township would supply, or Borough would supply the township with any EDUs that they needed.
Okay, you can't supply more than they have.
Right.
Well, they have, were you, maybe, how many did they say they have? 300 or something?
Yeah, they have 200 and 95.
66 or something.
Right. Something around there, but the, whatever occurs between Shrewsbury Borough Authority and Shrewsbury Township is completely separate from New Freedom Borough.
Right.
New Freedom Borough, the agreement is with New Freedom Borough, Shrewsbury Borough, and Railroad Borough. It's up to the authority then to allocate those EDUs in the township or anywhere else.
So if there's a problem, that's between them, the township, and the borough, which has been sued on several occasions?
At this point, correct, unless, and this has been a discussion too, about a complete new agreement, which would only be between New Freedom Borough and Shrewsbury Borough Authority. That way, the authority is allocated to EDUs, and they disperse them between the municipalities. But that is not at this time, that's only proposed to simplify things moving forward.
And you will let us know when meetings take place? Thank you. That was a.
How many times is Shrewsbury Borough?
Somebody's there with a check every meeting, wanting EDUs from the borough for the township.
They filed lots of.
There've been two lawsuits that were filed, and I think Shrewsbury lost them.
I thought nobody else had sued.
Pardon?
I thought nobody else had sued.
Oh, yeah.
That was when the.
It was a long time ago.
Nothing one of the last 10 years, so.
It had to do with. Giant and development down it. I think part of it was Hopewell.
It became art up there, that's what it was about.
But we can't get dragged in any of that, so we're.
I don't think, I think we're.
Hey, Sarah, Sarah. Now, everything else will fall under my EMS and fire.
Officer Grove got a letter of outstanding duty and compassion from a resident that he assisted in a traffic stop. Officer Wa and Castile are getting excellent on drug arrests. It was a box truck that hit three vehicles parked in Bling Rock, where it would get tagged. Officer Schwartz spent a lot of time getting to it, was able to solve it along with Detective Lays and Officer Wa. Shrewsbury, York Regional Police contacted SRPD regarding sex crimes against children. The perpetrator had moved into Shrewsbury. We found out it was a felon that was not supposed to possess a handgun. Our officers assisted in a sting operation to remove that individual from our community. Officer Hefner had researched shields for the department. They have two right now that are 15, 20 plus years old, being held together with duct tape. Average cost is approximately 2,500 for a metal of the road. Eighty-five total, two for patrol, two for the SROs.
You're talking about shields?
Shields.
Big shells of the years. Okay, riot shields.
Like a riot shield, except it's ballistic.
Gotcha.
So Chief will also look to get 18 radios. After 2026, the current radios they are, they have will not be usable for parts and replacement and so forth. And multiple communities are letting York know how many radios they need. They're hoping to go in and get a good reduced cost on the radios. They cost upwards of $5,000 each.
Any questions? Okay. Engineers' report? Any questions on warehouse? Questions on air? Water system?
Everything okay with 1-1? See, there's not a lot of galloped for March out of there.
Yeah, they're doing some maintenance.
Okay.
Whatever happened to the tank replacement? I haven't heard anything about it since 2022. Said it was in permitting.
That is currently waiting as part of a process to evaluate the system. The next step would be to communicate with DEP to determine whether or not we're required to keep that tank.
That's a slider tank.
Correct.
How many tanks do we have?
The hope is, is that we won't need it. If our system comes back and it's okay without it, it saves.
And if our system comes back and it's okay without it, it saves somewhere around three million dollars.
What's the current tank's name referred to as?
Colapine.
And how much does that hold?
Seven fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand gallons.
Yeah, so at what point do we know that we need to use a slider?
Uh, once we go through that process with DEP, we kind of put that on the back burner because the improvements of the well are more important at this point.
You think that's a decision that we made this year?
I, no, I do not think so. But I think like we're trying to get the permits and trying to get the bid out for the well upgrades. The goal is to replicate those improvements of the other wells moving forward over a period of time.
Okay. Wastewater system? Uh, zoning and code enforcement? Or the phase ratio first?
This new way to look at this is kind of confusing. And it takes an awful lot of paper. Is it? Did you change the system? Is that why the layout is changed?
Yes. Yeah, we're currently working on consolidating this a little bit and making it a little bit more clear. So basically you would eliminate that first page. You will see the last page, which would give the violations and the visits and clean it up a little bit and consolidate. So it's, it's a work in progress. But it's all inclusive and this is what we're trying to do is having everything in one place. Try to have everything in one place.
And when something's completed, you show what the violation was and then you show? Always the completed, done?
Correct. Yeah, there, there is, sort of like on that last one that you're pointing to. That shows the first picture, the second picture, and then that second page behind that shows the site visits where it failed and then it passed. So the goal is to consolidate, to show that last page maybe first and to show the violations.
So has it been fired?
It will be this week for the other days.
How do they pick up the trash without hitting the clock?
Very carefully. I think that's basically where he always keeps his trash can. Every time I go on by there, it's, that's where it is.
Is it for as well as all the vehicles down the side of the house?
For the stormwater violation, yes. Oh, yeah, on the street, yes. On the side of the house for.
Going back there.
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
Does this include remediation for the street with that oil?
I believe that would be determined during the hearing.
And when is that? You don't have that?
We didn't, we will.
So in the meantime, that's going to go down in the stormwater system?
We did, in the past, we put stormwater catches in that basin to identify if there was actually oil leaking at the time and there was not. So it's, it's not making its way, but it could. That's the potential.
Yeah, because you're showing puddles here that really are going to go somewhere. When, when that happens, my suggestion is get a hold of the fire department and have them go out there and lay down absorbent and charge him for it because they did that before. I think the cost was five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Fire department.
Especially that.
Yeah. I think we need to do that too.
They're called DEPs.
Difficult to pronounce, but yes. Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's, you said it'd be DEP, yeah?
Yeah.
And there, there are no other, well, you and I spoke of one other one. McCurley is not only here.
Yeah, that, that one we've, we've passed and will be cited, obviously, or filing against that as well.
Oh, how about the, um, that front street, that's up front street.
That is, they have ninety days from February tenth to make significant progress or we'll be back in front of the magistrate.
And that's per the magistrate. She gave him ninety more days.
Correct.
And it's worse.
Yeah. Yeah. Complaints this week, calls.
Embarrassing from the roundtable.
Is the trailer still there, the RV? So nothing's changed.
The animals, one of the three violations has been.
Do we ever check to see if the sewer has been drained into our manhole?
We did.
But is it?
Uh, it, it, at one point, yes. Currently and over the last year or so, no. It's going into the house. In the drink, well, I'm sorry.
I know what you mean.
Connection into the house.
People who live in their trailers in their yard in freedom?
No, that's why they're being cited.
And cite, and cite. It's not easy.
I mean, just a thought. But, I mean, isn't, isn't that another EDU? Like can't, can't charge him for an EDU or, you know, bringing a trailer into the, a whole other family into the house. It's not like you added a bathroom. It's like you added a house.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That may be just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, if they, if the couple who is staying in the trailer, who are the owners of the house, were in the house and had, you know, their niece staying with them, there wouldn't be an extra EDU.
Stewartstown, somebody was doing too much wash there and we're going to charge them EDUs.
It was, it was a commercial business.
Oh.
Shrewsbury changed their ordinance because of, um, RVs and the fact that sometimes people were hooking them up to the house and they changed the ordinance. I don't even think they're allowed to have them in driveways anymore.
Well, they're not allowed to have, they're not allowed to be living in the RV. That's, it's not something that's permitted.
Well, I think they passed that there, you could live in it for three day, no more than three days. Am I correct?
Not again.
Yeah, because, and people would come in, visit, vacation, stay a couple of days on the way someplace else. I think they allowed that. Correct me if I'm wrong. You and I both have a Shrewsbury Borough.
Yeah, I mean, that's not this though. This is, this is permanent.
I guess what I'm getting at is an ordinance for RVs. Is that necessary?
Well, the issue here is principal uses. It's not necessarily that it's a RV. It's the fact that there's two principal uses on a property that's only permitted for one.
Oh.
There's already, there's already.
Yeah.
Can't continuously create ordinances to try and certify what people are doing when there's ordinances on the book that could be enforced.
Oh, they are being.
I miss, that's what I'm saying. It can be enforced. There's no sense in making.
Without having additional. Subdivision and development report. Recreation.
All right. So in your practice tonight, there's two sets of information. We had our meeting last week because of the way the calendar fell. So you have one for March eleventh and then the following paper is the attendance. And then you have an additional one for April eighth, followed again by the additional attendance information. So, um, largely covered everything before about all the events, line dancing, football tournament that was, already had. They had a adult Easter egg hunt that happened over the weekend. Gina said it was, I think about fifty people signed up for that and, um. Uh, first concert, May seventeenth. Uh, there'll be a, another event, rail trail, trek and cookout. That's, uh, June first. Um, does anybody have any other questions or anything about either one of the packets?
Do they have music in the park set up for the entire summer?
Um, yes, there's three. They should all be scheduled. I don't remember the, all the other bands, but the first one here as listed.
That'd be nice to have that in their next report. Is that out on our website or any place?
Yeah, it's, it's all out there.
It's the Shamroads, which were there last year, and it's also Jimmy and the, Jimmy and the Whale.
Jimmy and the Whale is on the seventeenth.
Is on the seventeenth. Okay. Okay. I was just wondering if they were complete.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're out there. They're scheduled.
I couldn't make the last meeting.
Everything.
And it'll be in your newsletter that shouldn't be hitting your mailboxes.
Perfect timing.
Is that going to have complete dates of, you know, when things are? If it starts April thirtieth? Is it April thirtieth, May, every Wednesday and?
Yeah, there's a, there's a calendar of events as well as some.
I know it says MyRec, but is that?
It's just like it has been in the last two additions, maybe three additions.
Remember, people told me it's harder for me.
In the newsletter?
No, 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 on the website.
Oh.
About to dig a little bit.
If you, when you're into MyRec, everything's going on only click there on the first page.
I think it's getting to MyRec. Some people just want to, they have their own, is it email or their own page? New Freedom Borough at MyRec or something.
You can go to Shrewsbury Township's page, you can go to New Freedom Borough's page, and when you click on Rec Programs, it redirects you right to that website.
Um, additionally, as requested, there is a online link for meetings if people aren't able to attend. We'll be doing that if needed in the future.
So that'll be Zoom?
Um.
Is what you said?
I don't think it was Zoom. How did she?
She might use Teams.
I think it was Teams, yeah.
So you have to sign up for Teams then?
No. No, you can log in on the browser on Teams.
Yeah, you just, you just click on the link.
It's not, I'm used to Zoom. You have to have an address and a passcode.
Well, that's how the meeting, if the meeting's set up, that way, yes, you do have to authenticate and be a user. But it's all in how the meeting's established. I can, I can work with you on that.
Yeah, it'd be nice for us to know if we can attend.
Any other questions?
Okay. Um, under business development, um, April, April twenty-sixth, there's going to be a ribbon cutting at the new bakery. Um, I was asked tonight if we've been asked to cut the ribbon. I said I didn't know.
I didn't hear anything.
Um, it's nine A.M. It's a Saturday, the twenty-sixth, bakery ribbon cutting. So I'm going to try to get there, I think.
What time?
Nine A.M.
Oh.
Sorry.
Did they serve coffee? It'll wake you up.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I'll be there at eight thirty.
What date is that now? Uh, twenty-sixth at nine A.M. April twenty-sixth. Okay. So all of council is invited.
Oh, wait, I thought you said twenty-seventh.
I thought I said twenty-sixth.
Saturday, Saturday, twenty-sixth, nine A.M.
This is, um. The park, the park, yeah, one, one of the two.
Okay. EMS and fire funding, fire funding?
Um, you've got a. It's in here. Yeah, you've got an audit from the fireman's relief. Did we get an audit though from the rest of the fire EMS?
That would be up to them to provide because the Fireman's Relief Association is funded with money from the state. The state completes that audit and sends it to the respective municipalities. So this is just.
I know we always got one in the past.
I have not received one from.
I'll check at the next meeting. Okay?
It might be available. We just haven't seen it.
Yeah, no, they always gave us one. They usually give me one to give to you when you make a copy of it. So, um, EMS had what? Again? They're, they're just, wow, it's, it's just been, um. Total calls for the month of March, one hundred and seventy. Kudos. They only missed four calls. So they handled one hundred and sixty-six calls. There were several cardiac arrests. Very pleased to say one of them, our EMS department got there on time to throw that person back. And he's doing well and at home. So that's.
Always good to hear.
The reason for that, you know, for having them, and that was a New Freedom call. Um, I don't know if you want me to give you the entire lowdown on which, where each call was.
No.
Would, would it be beneficial for me? I don't give you the other pages because it's kind of a HIPAA thing, but I can give you the municipalities and the calls.
It'd be nice to see them.
So you can see what they're, let me do that in the future because that's now a separate page.
Yeah.
Um. Fire and EMS funding. We're going to have a problem. You mentioned radios. We're all going to have a problem with radios and I think they have thirty-some radios between EMS and fire. I don't know what we're going to do. It's over five thousand dollars apiece.
Chief, chief said, chief said that those radios, the, the police radios were slightly different than the fire radios?
Just the frequency.
So that they couldn't get on that same?
Just the frequency.
They can't get in on the buy, the, the big buy?
Shrewsbury said that they're the same, but can they talk to chief and get in on that big buy?
Well, it's not going to matter price-wise. We're going to try to do that. I'm going to see if maybe there's a Co-Stores that has a decent price. Because at five, over five thousand dollars apiece, we've been talking about this with schema. And it's on again, it's off again, it's on again, you know, it's, it's the new networks and changes. Um, but everybody's very concerned about it. I have a schema meeting coming up. I know we'll discuss it again there because Stan is the expert on all of that kind of stuff.
And the fire departments go in together? And I believe Chief Doberman said, Doberman said that he is not doing those radios right now.
He, not right now, but it's going to be something that, that's going to occur in the next year.
But he said he wasn't going to jump on it.
No, but he's going to have to once they cut them out.
I believe the radios will work. It's just the parts.
No, they won't. According to Stan, they will not, in the EMA, they will not work.
Stan was sitting next to Brad, so.
Well, the last schema meeting I was at, I'll, I'll bring it up in schema and report back. But that's going to be a major.
That's a bit too much to expect that there'd be like in state relief or something like.
Well, hopefully we can get some kind of grants, but we don't get work grants. Well, hopefully we can get some kind of grants, but we don't know what grants are gonna be at that time.
I believe the last time this was done, 10 or so...
They're analog, we had that, an old analog system under that cabinet.
The county secured the radios based on accounts that were supplied by all the departments.
They're not doing that anymore?
And, and then the payment...
Correct.
Obviously, the county sourced those radios, and that was through cooperative purchasing. And then what happened, most of the cases, municipalities allocated those funds in their upcoming budget year to pay for those radios for the departments.
It's my understanding there was no payment, they automatically gave each municipality a master raise, not the, not the portals, the, what do you call it?
Base station.
Base station.
This is another opportunity for municipalities that use our services heavily to contribute to these radios.
I agree, and I have brought that up. I've brought that up to SKEMA, I've brought that up in New Freedom, fire EMS meetings, and we're hoping to be able to do that.
EMS usually uses the same radios as fire, right?
Correct, they're just a different channel. So that's, that's gonna be a, a, a big one. I know Chris Boyer is very busy. I'm gonna ask him to forward me his report if he can't be here because that's important for us to know. They've had a couple of big fires, they've had major car accidents where they've been able to respond and, and actually saved a couple of those lives, removing them from, from vehicles. So... I, I wanna say, I should've mentioned it during the mayor's. We had somebody that was very important to this borough, and they retired. Talking about Donnie Portman. I think, I don't know whether it requires a motion, but I think that this council, at the very least, should be able to designate a commendation for his years of service and ask him to come into one of the meetings so that we can present it. I don't know if I have to bring that up for a vote, or I could do it as a mayor's commendation. But how many years was he here, 40?
37.
37, that counts, goes to 40.
Grounded.
Yeah, around, yeah.
I entertain a motion to authorize a commendation to be presented by the mayor, Donnie, for his 37 years of service.
So moved.
I appreciate that. Further discussion? That's something that you can write internally.
Andrew, Andrew and I have done them before, well, basically Andrew's done them before. I just can't about.
All in favor?
Aye.
My vote is aye.
Do I have anything for infrastructure, I don't think there's any personnel items? Let's ask the rental housing occupancy ordinance draft review.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, are we allowed to see a draft since you're discussing it?
Is there one online or something?
I couldn't find one.
Working, yeah.
This is why I suggested before that the TV should be on, and everything that we're viewing should be up on that TV for the people to see, because they're sitting out there like a mushroom, not knowing, and we're talking about things, what's going on.
Did you make any changes to the draft from last?
No, because the, the consensus council to...
No, no, that's fine.
Just to have the month to review.
I'll give it back, I will take everything, please.
I have another copy.
It's okay then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Where the hell, I don't have a copy. No, I read it. I'm sorry, I gave my extra away.
You, you need another copy because I brought mine from the last meeting.
No, I, I have it here, I'm sorry, it was mixed in with the last, okay.
Are we just, is the intention to just come up with additional potential changes to...
Yeah, you've had it for a couple of months now, and now it's, we, we just wanna discuss what your feelings are on what we have done as a draft. I thank Ann for being here, I know you have had your share of problems when it comes to dealing with rentals. Our police officers have had problems with rentals down the street from you in, what is the name of that?
Oh, the development?
Yeah.
Spring, I don't remember what it's called, New Freedom Apartments, maybe? Springville, Springs...
I don't wanna call it whatever we always call it, but it's low-income housing development. It's been a nightmare as of late.
This has no teeth to address that, like Stewartstown and Glen Rock.
Well, the last time we brought it up... The last time we brought it up, it came back that the kind of, let me put it crassly, that people own that, they should be able to do with it what they want. That's not the case. We're responsible for the health, safety and welfare of residents in this borough, and that includes people that are leasing apartments, especially larger complexes. We have good people at Burkentine. They manage their own, they have a person that manages, and that person would take care of everything that is in this ordinance themselves. We have other places right now that if they had to come up to the International Property Maintenance Code, the IPMC, there's no way they'd pass. This helps us, I think, to enforce that, am I correct, Andrew? Which we haven't. We also need to have people registered so that we know who lives where. Denny and I were just at a meeting with, I'll bring this up too, York Area Tax Bureau. Andrew and I have talked about it, it's not really our problem, but we can help them because we get money back based on the York Area Tax Bureau, okay? If they don't know somebody's living there and they're saying they live in Maryland, geez, I wonder who that is? But there may be other people that...
But earned income tax doesn't come from tenant rosters, earned income tax comes from employers.
That's right, but it comes from the employer based on where the person lives. If they have an address to put in their database, they can make sure that it matches, especially rentals, that it matches what their database says. And he's told me that it would be an excellent idea, and he wished more places did it, because we're the ones that are suffering because we're not getting that income.
So you've got earned income tax, you've got York Adams to tell you that if you gave them a list of tenants, they'd run it against the database?
Yes.
I really find that hard to believe.
Well, you did, you were there, McCleary. He's the head of, head of YATB, and we're gonna have another discussion, that's another thing we've discussed. We, we haven't been attending the meetings. Nobody from here's been attending the meetings. And I think I asked you, Mr. President, if there's a situation, or even if there is a situation, put me in as an alternate, I'd be happy to go if, if can. Because apparently they, they have been missing us, and he mentioned it to me. So I think it's, that's, that is an important part of what we can, part of what we can do with this. Inspections and enforcement, we want to see on that, because the last time we brought it up, it was, you know, it was, you know, well, it's, do we have to have a...
You should put it on the next agenda because it's not on the agenda.
Appointing.
Well, that's an appointment, does that, an appointment have to go on?
It's still, it's still engine action.
No, it's de minimis, isn't it?
Yeah, there's no money involved in that, so... It's okay.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, just go ahead.
We'll put it on the agenda.
We'll put you next to the alternate to York.
I'm not against this, health and safety, one for is good, but there's another part of this with the problem landlords who get tenants that are disruptive in our communities, this really doesn't address that. There's no teeth in this, like I brought before, Glen Rock and Stewartstown, they have them, they work well, and we don't have anything like that in our community, and the police have said they can't do the enforcement like they can do in Glen Rock and Stewartstown because we don't have anything like that.
This isn't for police enforcement, this is for borough enforcement.
I understand that, but I'm saying, this is great to have this, but it's still lacking in our community to get rid.
We, I, I can always add to it later, all right?
I need to interject something. You're, you're right, there's nothing in here that allows the police to, to make...
To let the borough know, and then when X amount of citations have went to...
And the police also said that New Freedom doesn't have the problem.
Actually, they do, right at the end of one, you know exactly what we're talking about, yes, they do. And they say they have nothing to be able to resolve the issue because we don't have an ordinance like Glen Rock and Stewartstown does.
I, you know, I, I mean, I, you're really, you're really stepping on severe violations of the Constitution.
That's why I'm gonna have...
How?
Well, for instance, Glen Rock's resolution, first of all, Glen Rock's resolution says that two people who aren't married can't live in the same house. There are probably people who are not married living in the same house somewhere in New Freedom Borough.
I'd like to verify that, that's not what I'm speaking about. I'm speaking about repeated calls out to residences, and nothing can be resolved here in New Freedom about that like it can in Glen Rock or Stewartstown over time.
So if there's a, like a call about a marital, marital dispute, like if, if they're having a fight, you want the police to be able to address that?
To let the borough know that we've had X amount of calls out to the home and after time, and they just updated it to where that landlord can't move that tenant to just another property within the borough, or they'll get their landlord license removed.
So what, what you're, what you're saying, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're saying is, is there is a belligerent jerk of a husband or of a wife, I'll get one's up, then the police are called out, and if they go three times, then the poor father or the poor mother has to take the three kids and go find another place to live because of an abusive spouse.
You gave that fallacy last time as well, and that's not the issue that goes on within those two municipalities. So you can make things up of what ifs, but they have that ordinance in place now, and that is not what's happening there. I'm just, I'm just bringing it to light.
Sir, come on over to my house Friday night.
I'm sorry?
Come on over to my house on Friday night and hang out with us for a little while. And you'll see how often the police come by, or how often they should come by. We have people that, driving up and down the road, smoking weed. I got neighbors that smoke weed, you can smell it. There's nothing we can say or nothing we can do about it, but if, if the person who owned that property is held accountable for it, if the cops get called over there three or four times, then the, the person renting that property should be notified about it.
Do they have a medical marijuana card?
No, they don't. And it doesn't matter anyways because it's, the, they called over there three or four different times just from domestic issues, not even the weed. Not even that, they could...
Well, if the police aren't gonna enforce domestic issues or things that we already have in our other ordinances about nuisances, then shame on them and shame on us for not going back to the police and saying, why aren't you, you got a nuisance complaint, why didn't you do something about it?
Go back to the property owner.
They're, they're included in our other ordinances. What, what are you going to do with a property owner?
They're the ones that's leasing the property out, it's their property.
They're gonna revoke their rental license in New Freedom, that's what you're gonna do. That's the same thing they do in Glen Rock and Stewartstown, it works well. They cleaned up their communities. I attend their meetings and I hear what they're doing.
I do too, and I think they go a little beyond what we're really looking for. I think this is a place to start, and if we want, we, can we add to this by resolution?
No.
It would be separate, but I've already brought it to this council, and this council has said no.
That's why we have something that's a little less intrusive, and I think it's, it's better than nothing.
It's different, it's not, it's not addressing the bottom of issues, it's not...
It, it, it is here to enforce inspections, there are inspections and enforcement here. It is basically for the health, safety of people living in conditions that should not be.
Which I said.
Doesn't have anything to do with nuisance, doesn't have anything to, it even says in here about noise. If they're, one of the neighbors is noisy and they get a complaint, they complain to the...
They have a nuisance for that already, and all it needs to be...
That's right, but a lot of things we have an ordinance already for.
I'm saying I don't agree with this.
You, you literally, you literally have an ordinance that covers everything that's in here. I mean, Pennsylvania law covers it, federal law covers it.
Covers a lot of it, not all of it.
What doesn't it cover?
It, it doesn't cover the fact that we could, that we have, if somebody complains, you know, I, I can, I can tell you three places right now that if there's a fire in that place, people are gonna die because they can't get out. There's no egress out of those, out of those places. There are decks that if somebody walked out on them, they would fall from the third floor to the, to the ground. And those are things that I think we need to...
That's all covered by the International Property Maintenance Code.
So is this. This brings that to the forefront with the owner of the property, and it also brings certain things to the forefront with the tenant that makes a complaint. They can complain to us, and then it's our responsibility to make sure that it's taken care of if we don't know. We don't even know the places that are rental places. We don't have the manpower to go out and do that. We're gonna have to...
Absolutely we do, absolutely we have, we're two square miles, we're not a metropolitan city. And again, I'm saying, I, I agree with this.
What are you gonna do, knock on people's door and ask them if they rent? And how are you gonna determine if they rent? Most of them, you know, the, the major ones, there's four mailboxes in front of a building. There's three mailboxes in front of a building. We know, we know how many trash receptacles are at a particular building. You know, I can tell you right now...
We do have the manpower for those, right?
Well, that's ten waste, I mean, they deliver the trash, that doesn't mean we know that there's four. We haven't enforced it, we have, we need to enforce the ordinance we have, and this helps us to do it as...
We know that you're paying for trash bills, if there, if you said there's four tenants, and there's four trash services, then you know there, someone is paying for trash bills.
I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus. I'm saying we need to enforce a lot of those things. We should've been doing it all the way back to when Tanya Crawford was here, we didn't. Now, this will help us to do that, and it will help us to make sure that every apartment has a smoke detector, every apartment has a fire extinguisher, every apartment has a method of egress out of that. Because the first time somebody gets killed or dies in a fire, and a relative finds out that they had no way to get out of it, who are they gonna come back to and sue? The borough and the landlord.
Well, if you know where those places are, and you report them to WAVE, then there should be an inspection made, and, like even the deck issue, I don't, I don't understand, we have things on the books.
I don't understand either, I said I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus, let's start... Let's start from square one here.
Or do you wanna start with a review of this and go through page by page? Cause I would be, I would do that.
If, if that's what you want. Everybody had an opportunity to look at it. I mean, you.
The home on 851. You know, you assess it, which was reported, you know that they couldn't get in there when they had that electrical fire. What's the borough done about that since then? Two, you asked, how do we figure out where the rentals are? Ask Glen Rock and Stewartstown, cause they figured it out. I'm sure they can tell you how.
And I'm sure we can all figure it out too. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 people that live in this borough. You drive around this borough every day, I'm sure. If you see a place, write it down, give it to that man. He can take a look at it and see where the trash bill goes, where the gas goes, the electric. He could, he can pull stuff up on his computer like that. He's a whiz. And see who the owner is. But we need to know also, not only who the owner is, who the resident of those apartments are. It could be an old fa, an elderly couple that, as you brought it up, that's in a wheelchair, that needs oxygen, that we have to get out in case of an emergency. That's another way for renters that we can assume. We've got Knox Box Ordinance that hasn't been really initiated for rental properties that, because we don't really acknowledge that they're rental properties. All of this helps that with the registration. My first thought is they need to be registered. We can go from there. This also brings up the IPMC statutes, and if somebody feels unsafe, they can report it to us. And there shouldn't be, you know, the owner doesn't have to know that it was reported by a tenant, cause of fear of getting kicked out.
You just cited PA law. PA law says that there's no retribution, whether there is or not, I can't tell you, but PA law says there's to be no retribution, that you, they even have a fix and hold clause in the PA law where if I tell you my hot water heater's broken, I'll just finish my sentence. If I tell you that my landlord, that the hot water heater's broken, and he doesn't fix it within a reasonable period of time, I could call Gamble's, have them replace the hot water heater and withhold rent until the water heater is paid off.
That's what this says.
And that's what PA law says. And as Erica says.
Okay, so I follow PA, why do you need a new, new ordinance that might just follow the law as it exists, sir?
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify, Mr. Mayor. So you, it sounds like you're proposing an ordinance that will serve as a search warrant.
No.
No, that's what it sounds like.
No, I, I didn't say anything about.
You're asking for permission to go into private residences and verify, and verify there's.
Or my.
He gets public comment, but we're not arguing with people.
And, and verify that this is a livable condition, but you actually have no constitutional right to dictate how this person lives. This is a very dangerous line. I'm not saying that we don't need some kind of legal protections here, but I think that the ordinance needs to go on the property owner. That, you know, and, and some joint effort between you guys and Southern Regional Police Department or the, or the local acting response team. Well, we have plenty of law and procedure here to facilitate litigation against tenants, but now you're asking, you know, are these billable man-hours when we're sending out municipal employees to find out if we have renters here? Is that, are you, I'm under no obligation to tell you that I'm a renter, right? You're, you're, you're circum.
This makes it so that you are, or the owner of their property is responsible.
Correct. So I think that, I think that's where it should stop.
That's pretty much where it does stop.
But the, my understanding or my interpretation of what you are presenting or the powers that you're trying to give to council are that of forced inspections or no knock raids on my house.
No.
As a renter. I just wanna clarify it.
No.
Okay?
Only if there is a complaint filed.
Oh, okay, so.
By a, by an individual that rents that, and it does not meet the IPMC, the International Property Maintenance Code.
I don't think that's true. I think what you're, what you're giving people, the, you are saying that if the landlord and the tenant do not allow you to enter their home and look in their bedrooms and look in their, in their personal spaces without probable cause, that you are going to fine them and can imprison them up to, I forget how many days, 30 days, I think?
Show me where you're seeing that.
Section 10.
Thank you. Because we've got, we, something has to be done.
Any owner or occupant or other person in charge of a rental property has received notice, oh wait.
Of a violation of this article and fails to take necessary corrective action shall upon conviction.
Okay, so if we. Definitely different tenant? No. If the tenant and the landlord both say, I don't want you in my house, and then you can file them and violate, find them in violation of this ordinance, and they can be sentenced to imprisonment, imprisonment in New York County Prison for a period of not more than 30 days, or pay a fine not less than $100, or not more than $1,000 to never wear.
You can't create an ordinance that creates jail time. That's, only criminal statutes can do that.
All our other ones do.
Their public comment one does, up until jail?
Yeah.
That wasn't, that wasn't the public comment one. That was actually a PA Criminal Code statute for, that's, that's where that is found, but it doesn't have anything to do with public comment.
Erica, you mentioned that there's a renters license agreement in New Freedom? I've never heard of that before.
I've brought it up for three years.
I couldn't say?
It's on the book.
Excuse me? You said that if they, they, they could have their renters license revoked.
That's how it is in Glen Rock and Stewartstown, yes.
This, this ordinance provides for a renters license. You have to be licensed to, to rent your, rent your property. I have no problem if the tenant says, my landlord has not provided any smoke detectors, my landlord has a loose banister, and my kids are gonna fall down the stairs, my landlord has a deck on the back that my kids go out onto and.
My furnace doesn't work, and it's 60 degrees in here for the last week. That's what I see this saying.
I have no problem with the tenant inviting the borough into their home to inspect something.
That's what it says.
I do have a problem, no, it doesn't.
It says that in addition to.
Well, in addition to.
We need one person to talk about this.
I should've said.
Here, here's what my recommendation would be, cause it sounds like there's a lot of different ideas and it hasn't been, we don't have a, a solid basis from where we're starting from. One, I would say, let me take the existing proposed ordinance to Walt, so you can take a look at it for legality generally, cause this is the first time I'm looking at it. And, and I wanna make sure that this starting ground at least is solid. I think that Erica, if you have some recommendations for things that you'd like to see, I would recommend either sending them directly to Walt or to Andy, and Andy can forward them to Walt, so he can review them for, for legality. And then, and then I think we reconvene next month with all those ideas, and, and we'll know what, what's, at that point, Walt will know what's legal, what's not legal, so we can at least have a basis to go from, and then we can have probably a more productive discussion.
That's why it's being presented here tonight, so we can do this. Andrew, I'm not hearing a comment from you. Would you please? You've done this for how many years? Ever since in, in.
Yeah.
What problems did you see with something like this? None, right?
And I think.
I'm sorry.
No.
I'm answering your question.
I think council did review probably over a dozen different rental housing occupancy ordinances at one point, and then that's kinda what formed the committee and, and that span went through. But when I was at Spring Grove, we started, I should say, we, the council, put into place a rental housing occupancy ordinance in about 2008. That ordinance required every other year inspections of every single rental property within Spring Grove. It also required, similar to this draft ordinance, a registration and annual licensing fee, which required the landlord to submit a form indicating the tenants, their names, ages, and contact information. And then borough staff, which was obviously very limited at Spring Grove, so most of the time it was me going out and doing those inspections. At the time, it was 300 and, around 350 rental units, just in Spring Grove that needed inspected every two years. So it is a, a large amount of time that's taken. I have not administered a program such as Glen Rock and Stewartstown where the police have the ability to inform the borough office or the municipal office that there's continued violation and that rental license being revoked. I have administered where licenses have been revoked for lack of real estate tax payment or lack of utility payments, sewer refuse, water payment. So there's multiple different aspects that, that can be utilized. Just as many times at, in Spring Grove that we went after a landlord for compliance, we went after a tenant for compliance. So that council at the time really went and made sure that it was equal across both the occupant and the landlord. There were times, like I said, that we filed in, in the magistrate over how a tenant kept their property based on the regulations, and then we filed against the landlord for not registering their property, or failing to provide smoke detectors, we'll just say, or railings, and among other items. So there was a pretty wide range. I mean, that was over all the 13, 14 years that I was there. So we, again, inspected every two years. We provided those landlords the ability to register their properties every year online and submit all that paperwork and pay the fee, which can get quite costly if you're trying to cover the cost of a municipal employee administering that program, issuing a license, completing an every-two-year inspection. That, that can add up pretty quick, in amount of time and amount of cost. This proposal does not do that. This proposal is just that it's requiring the landlord to register their property, to inform the borough office of how many units, the number of tenants, the names of those tenants, and contact information, and if there is a violation that they have the ability or the tenant has the ability to submit a complaint, which would trigger the inspection. So this is not, the way this is written right now, this would not automatically put a property on inspection schedule. It would only require an inspection should there be a complaint.
We tried to do the very minimum amount that we could, taking all those other dozen ordinances from other municipalities that nobody wanted to hear about, take all that out and put the minimum that we thought was necessary for, again, the health, welfare, and safety of those residents.
I have absolutely no problem if a tenant calls and wants an inspection. They have an inspection. And that's, I have a problem with section six where it says, the code's enforcement officers will inspect the rental property in the borough to determine compliance in response to a complaint. Now, you didn't say that was a tenant complaint, you just said a complaint. So that could be any.
Who else is gonna complain?
I could complain about your house, or you could complain about my house.
You certainly could, especially if I got loud music or.
No, no, it's. Fire pit, but see, that's, that's a noise ordinance violation, which is already on the books. You don't need an ordinance for that. To, to a complaint that an alleged violation of the provisions of this article, the code's enforcement officer is authorized to inspect rental properties and surrounding premises at any reasonable hour to ensure compliance with this article. Entry and free access must be granted upon proper identification through inspections, maybe postponed due to illness. If access is denied, obstructed, or interfered with, the borough may seek a court order to enforce compliance.
That is in response to a complaint.
Not a tenant complaint.
Yes.
Anybody's complaint.
Which again is why. It could be anybody's complaint.
Again, why I would like to have this reviewed, there's probably definitely some Fourth Amendment.
I can complain to him about, which I have, about a balcony that's ready to fall down, and there is no egress. Are you saying that because I complain, the borough can't do anything about it?
No, we already have that on the books. The IPC says about that. If you get a complaint, you should be able to have that done.
So.
I have no idea.
So what's the difference?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think what I, in my mind, when I was kind of going through all this, I was thinking inspections at the time of the, of the lease.
Oh, I, I agree with that.
So, I mean, that's a starting point. I mean, for instance, what, you know, you check that there's no mold, just very specific safety and health issues.
Oh, yeah, I hundred percent agree with, when, when a tenant moves out.
And they register anyone.
If you want the borough to go in and inspect at that point, that's fine, cause nobody's living there and no one has their personal possessions sitting out. I agree with that. We can do that.
But, you know, the rest.
At least I think we can.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that should trigger that. I mean, there's other types of inspections, building inspections, you know, between blocks you in an apartment.
I agree with you. I agree with that.
Making sure there's smoke detectors.
I, I think, I think that, that she's on the right track, cause that would avoid Fourth Amendment violation.
Right, cause there's nobody living.
Yeah, because, I mean.
How does everybody?
None of us would, would even consider voting for anything that would impede anybody's rights or anything, you know what I mean?
We would hope not.
Just so I understand, there are places and resources for some of these things, that if tenants have issues now, they can like go to the magistrate?
No.
Or.
Well, they could go to the magistrate, but more likely they could go to PA Housing Office. There are actually lawyers that are, that you could go to. If your landlord is not providing heat or not providing the proper habitable space for you to live in accordance with your lease, then you can go and you could actually sue your landlord. You can make them fix the heat, make them fix the hot water. And again, in theory, there should be no reprisals for that, because they're only reporting something that is promised to them in the lease anyway. You're promised to have hot water, you're promised to have heat in your lease, so.
Is that at a state level?
Yeah, state and federal. Well, state, I think state is mostly the habitable situation. Federal is regarding sex, gender, et cetera, you know, the normal things that you would not be allowed to discriminate against a person for.
And how much does a lawsuit cost for them when these people can hardly afford the rent?
All pro bono. All pro bono. All these lawyers.
Way in the law.
If, if, if the federal and state can do it, I don't know why we can't also enforce it locally, which every other municipality around us is doing. How many times did you get sued, Andrew, in all those years?
None.
None?
Can I also just say, our record at going to the magistrate for violations of such, the roaches? How did that end up? Not horribly, or favor, right?
No.
The Front Street issue? How did that end up? So I feel like we're treading a line to make governing practices that aren't gonna really probably hold up so much.
This eliminates somebody from. I think more importantly is you are going to create another, what I call a toothless ordinance, that is, you're, you're gonna be going back in front of the magistrate saying, you know, that they violated this, that, or the other, and the magistrate's gonna say, well, they have 90 days to fix it, or they have whatever to fix it, and then it's just gonna get kicked down the road, kicked down the road. The problem is, and I, I hate to say this, but I think the problem is, is that the, the things that are of paramount importance, that are really health and safety issues, need to go to commonplace court, and then they have some teeth.
And that can happen now without.
That can happen now, without any other ordinances. You can, you can. You can invoke and enforce your own ordinances that you have currently. You can have your tenants register. You can use the PA law. You can use the laws and ordinances we already have on the books. The problem is, is it costs money. You have to get a lawyer involved to go to commonplace court, and it will cost money. So that's why I say you gotta pick and choose what you wanna try to enforce and not have, for lack of a better word, frivolous ordinances that are gonna cost you a lot of money to enforce and give you very little bang for your buck.
And the people that want to file complaints that don't have egress or don't have, can do that too dead?
Absolutely. That's an absolute fact. And in June of 2015, there was a Pennsylvania State Supreme Court ruling that what I just read in Section Six is called a warrantless search and is a Fourth Amendment violation.
How does everybody else get away with doing?
There's no one who's called the American Civil Liberties Union on Glen Rock Borough yet.
Or Shrewsbury.
Or Shrewsbury, whoever, whoever, you know. Because in general, tenants really just don't call.
I don't know what you have against protecting the residents of that rent in this borough.
I don't. I have, I have no problem. What I told you was, I am in favor of, as Ann said, having an inspection when the people move out. I am also in favor of having inspections when a tenant calls and says, "I have a problem and my landlord won't fix it." Because then they're inviting you into their house. And then you can go in and look at the problem and help them get it resolved. That's what I think. I mean, what I am not in favor of is having New Freedom Borough knock on your door and say, "This is, we told you a week ago we were gonna inspect. I don't, I can't help it, you're breastfeeding your kid on the couch there, and your kids are doing this and that."
That's not what this says.
It does.
It says that you have, you make an appointment with them, and within twenty-four hours, or.
Why should I make an appointment if I'm a tenant and I'm in my own house?
So you're not sitting there breastfeeding your kid. You could get some money.
No, why should I let you into my house?
If you file a complaint, what?
If I didn't file a complaint.
We're talking about people that file complaints.
Oh, no, if somebody filed a complaint, obviously, yes.
Can we have the solicitor take her and talk about it the next meeting?
The solicitor had the other one and has this one already. He got it last month.
And you said to call your local agencies and government officials. How did that work with the roaches?
It didn't work well, because unfortunately, the Pennsylvania Health Department doesn't consider roaches a health issue.
You said, "Contact your government authorities."
Well, but you can, again, you can only do what they'll do.
No, that's actually, that's actually not true.
I'm sorry?
CYS said they didn't, the Child Protective Services said they didn't consider it a health issue. The Health Department put it on you guys. They just kept saying, "This is a borough problem." They never said it wasn't a health and safety issue. They just said it wasn't their, their problem. It was your, your problem, is what they told us several times, even in writing.
And if somebody goes to magistrate, they may say the same thing. What did the borough say? What's the borough's ordinance pertaining to this?
Or you took that person to court.
Oh, I don't know. They don't have one.
Oh, we do. We have, we have a registration ordinance. We have noise ordinances on the books.
That aren't enforced.
I'm sorry?
That aren't enforced.
They aren't enforced. Well, what's gonna make this any different than the ones that aren't enforced now?
Because I'm gonna make them sure it's enforced.
To enforce the ordinances like they should be. Get rid of all of them if you're not gonna enforce them. What's the use of having them there?
Well, that's why I call them toothless ordinances. I don't disagree with you, Erica. I think that we need to do something that makes sense. But unfortunately, the issue here is, is that I believe that everything that I've read says that what you're proposing here is a Fourth Amendment violation. But we can let the solicitor take it.
I think you misinterpreted.
The enforcement of this municipality comes from this council direction, and that's where it's lacking. There's no consistency and a selective enforcement, and it's been going on for years and decades.
Well, I think you've seen, if you look at our, I mean, it'll be interesting to see what happens with the two complaints that get filed this month that are currently on the books that we just reviewed, because more and more that happens is that nothing happens. So, I mean, and unless you take it to commonplace court and there's an actual, they actually have the power to invoke specific sanctions. I mean, you know, giving people ninety days to clean up something, and then they report back, "Well, they did a little bit of stuff, and so they moved some stuff around." You know, it's really hard to get a, get the magistrate to give a specific ruling against the people who are violating the ordinances.
Sir, I think you're speaking now of de minimis ordinance infractions that don't include the lives of our residents. This is a protection for people's lives, to make sure that there is a fire extinguisher, to make sure that there's a method of egress, that there's a method of smoke detectors. How can anybody be against that and making sure that those rental properties have that? We had it at that. They had to have it at Burgantine when they put them in. They have sprinkler systems.
Am I not against it? I'm a for it.
Well, you sure sound like it.
When there's nobody occupying the unit.
And when there is somebody and they have a complaint, are you against that?
No. If they have, if you get a tenant complaint, I have no problem with. You're being invited into their home then, and then that would be fine.
Well, if somebody complains and they say, "Yeah, I want you to come take a look at this. I don't have any heat. They haven't had it for a week." They're inviting you in.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's pretty much what I think the bulk of this says. If there's something you think that's beneficial to.
Is that the word tenant in there?
It does. Tenant complaint.
In response to a.
Let us review it.
Yeah, review.
We're not gonna get any word in hand.
Right. It says, "In response to a complaint." That could be anybody.
Okay. Let's change it to tenant complaint.
I'll buy that.
Well, I think it would probably have to be tenant of the. You couldn't say a tenant.
Tenant of the, well, it could be a tenant that next door.
Just let, won't review it.
Well, they have, I guess.
I have, well, I have a couple of questions before we talk this into another circle.
Where are we at now? Who's speaking? Oh, sorry, hearing aids. Come on.
So I gave this to a friend of mine who has rental properties in Shrewsbury Borough. I believe that both of them are in the borough. Is, I guess this is the third page, very top. Every owner of rental property.
Wait, 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 wait. Go by section.
I'm saying, I think the number of the pages also.
Well, that's why I said, "Third page," at the very top.
Okay, go ahead.
So the one that starts "Every owner."
Yep.
Okay. Every owner of rental property containing two or more dwelling units. Is there a reason why it has to be two or more?
Because we tried to make.
I'm not asking, I'm just, these are things I'd like to have clarified with.
Well, there wouldn't be shared public areas if there was one. It would just be the tenants' area. So it has to be two or more to create the public area.
All right.
I'm sorry, were you gonna?
There's no shared public areas yet.
All right, that's, that's fine. All right, the very next one down, cleaning sanitary condition. That's like, defined as grass height, that part of that.
Dwelling, dwelling unit and premises.
Containing. I guess, I guess what I'm saying specifically.
You would want a definition.
Yeah, but now, does that come along with the Property Maintenance Code?
The Property Maintenance Code, again, only covers that.
Okay. Yes, property maintenance.
It's a reiteration.
Okay, so that's gonna answer, I think, a couple of these other questions. Going down, the one that relates about the temperature, one to, fourth bullet point down, saying sixty-eight. Most people that are leaving their house or vacation unit do more like fifty-five. Actually, keep my house at sixty-eight right now.
It has to be able to be at least sixty-eight. It can be lower. It doesn't have to be sixty-eight. If the tenant doesn't want it sixty-eight, they can put it down to fifty-eight.
No, no, this is saying if the tenant is not the person responsible for controlling the temperature. So in other words, I, I'm renting here, but you're renting the hallway, and the hallway has the thermostat, so I can't control my own heat. So that would be.
You have to be able to maintain sixty-eight degrees.
Okay. And then I think we touched on this one at the very last meeting. So it's the very last bullet point on there. Is it legal to require somebody to be within twenty minutes? Or, excuse me, twenty miles? So that's another one maybe to look into.
It is if you make it a part of the ordinance.
I mean, who's to tell me where I own a rental property?
They don't have to. They don't have, it says. They don't have to live twenty miles, but they have to designate someone who would be in charge.
But that costs money, then.
Well, most of them use Southern Management or another management company if they don't live.
Well, you gotta remember, when you make an ordinance, you're making it for everybody, not for most of the people.
Yeah, so I guess my question to that would be, is that legal?
Yep.
Switching over to Section Four, we already talked about the Property Maintenance Code. Annual registration fee, is that included in the fee schedule for everything else?
We'd have to vote on that as a resolution.
Okay. The other one about property maintenance.
You do realize too, just as, oh, by the way, that if you impose a fee on the property owner, that the rent's gonna increase.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna pass it on.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
If it's twenty-five dollars a year.
Well, he has the floor right now. Let him, let him talk. No, he's not gonna.
Well, he was.
But he's still going. He also stopped.
I think that was it. The other one was about appeals, but I think we've already kinda talked about that one. Because it also involves the Property Maintenance Code and nothing else. So that was it, just so if we can make those noted for clarification for the.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll be happy to take a look at that.
This is just a question. Can the draft be in the next month's packet for everyone, like, for us to see?
You can't see it from there, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, normally, we don't put the draft ordinances in the public packet because they're working papers, but that's up for council to determine and discuss. We can do whatever council likes.
I think the whole package is put online, accessible to all borough residents that would like to see the upcoming business.
I think the only exception, and the solicitor can clarify if I'm wrong, would be the code enforcement report, because it could potential.
Yeah.
Sure. Ninety-five, eighty percent of the packet.
Can you do that online and omit that? If people want to, they go online and see it, along with the agenda. Well, within the agenda, all they have to do is click on it, and there it is, like there's.
There's already a link to it, so, yeah, it just would be making the link public.
And then take out anything that's.
Yeah, and you think that's covered in executive session.
Yeah, or like you said, that's.
Potential litigation.
Want to motion for that?
I don't really think it's necessary.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate everybody's input. I'm sorry, it got a little heated. It's just something that I think we've needed to do for a long time in order to protect our.
Well, I've got to take a notebook.
No, my book is fine.
I just wanted to thank you guys for, whoever is yours.
I, it's kind of my baby.
I thank you very much. I think we are a case study for some of that, but I appreciate you guys even bringing it up. We have to go back to our puppy dogs now, so I just wanted to thank you before we.
You could have brought the puppy dogs.
Can we really?
Okay.
Oh, God. It would be so funny.
Am I gonna regret that? Okay.
There might be.
It'll be a lot of.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Everyone else.
Thank you.
I have a question. It says there on the first page, under occupant, a guest will not be considered an occupant. You have to qualify guests. I mean, what if I have somebody in my house who's a guest, and I go to Florida for four months? And they're there. Are they still a guest? I'd say they were, but.
Well, there could be a house in it. I don't know.
Egress on their license? I'd say they're a guest.
I just wondered, you know, how things can be.
Well, you have a, I mean, obviously, when you create a rental ordinance, you're creating two classes of citizens automatically. You're creating property owners, and then down here, you've got people who rent. You can't avoid that. And that's my biggest problem with this kind of an ordinance, is, you know, why can't we come in your house and make sure you have smoke detectors and a fire extinguisher in the kitchen? Why does that only apply to renters?
It doesn't. IPMC says that they should have it.
I had this question. I had said something to somebody about all the new rentals, like, down at Burgantine, had to have the lockbox. And the person owns a home who says, "Hey, that's a good idea. Why don't we all have to have?" I mean, you know.
Well, the fire company's gonna kick your door in if there's no lockbox, so.
Just like they always did at the train station one night. If they wouldn't have gotten hold of somebody, you're talking thousands of dollars versus a couple of hundred to put a lockbox on the front of the bill.
All right, we have some correspondence. York County Open Space Annual Report. Thank you. Did you wanna say anything about?
No, just informational. They're actually, obviously, it's that time of the year, so a bunch of them are coming in. And I just wanted to make sure the council had the opportunity to review or ask any questions that I could take back to the respective organizations.
Yeah. I would guess that Gina would get a copy of the York County Open Space Annual Report. Okay, there's also York County Planning Commission Annual Report.
Also, I thought the Realtors Association was pretty interesting when you kinda get down into some of the details on there about the makeup of New Freedom between, you know, marital status, home size, everything. It was pretty, pretty compelling, yeah.
It was not correct. If you look at other.
All right, I mean, that's the difference of Googling something and going to a different search engine.
It's, it's.
That's, I mean, you're gonna get.
It's York County.
All right, maybe they had different years, but I think a lot of this was from census data.
Yeah, they put that report out, obviously, annually, and they have for quite some time, and it does have a lot of information.
Yeah, yeah, I would particularly like to break up between New Freedom, York County, and Pennsylvania, just to kinda see where everything's in.
Compliance audit report from, we already talked about, Retschardt's Realty Association. And I will find out about the other, the other two.
Just very quickly, I know I mentioned this in the past. You do have the SPCA 2024 Impact Report. We did have a small municipal working group with the SPCA that's looking at their funding opportunities and kind of the deficits that they're facing and the challenges. So I think moving forward, that all municipalities in York County are going to be receiving amended housing complaint, or, sorry, back on the rental part. Housing care agreements, and those most likely are going to increase in cost. Again, that's for your residents to be able, have the ability to take stray animals there at no charge and just basically help provide that essential service to the resident. So as we get into budget time, middle of the year.
Do you know about how much?
We don't at this point. They're looking at different funding models, whether that's a charge per resident, a per capita, I don't wanna say tax, not a tax, but just basically. but just basically a per capita charge, whether that's a division of how many animals are serviced annually from your municipality, based on the total percentage. Total percent of population based on the amount of money that they need to raise. There's multiple different funding formulas. We're working through that, but I'm just laying the groundwork that there probably will be an increased ask, not only from New Freedom Borough, but from every single municipality in York County going into 2026.
What was last year's fee?
It's, it's only a couple thousand. I think it's, basically comes out to almost 50 cents a person. I think it's somewhere around $3,000.
And what happens if we don't pay that, and we have somebody that takes an animal, the SPCA?
Well, they would, they would pay. They would have to pay, or if the SPCA has the capacity, they have to turn away.
Really? What if they don't have the capacity and we do pay?
They, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of that information's in here, but if you haven't been there, I know that they have their video that kind of goes through all the number of animals, and the amount of spade litter, and the amount of rabies immunizations that they do annually, and it's, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it's my bother, like somebody's-
They went to the other Bierburos this year, and I don't know why they didn't come here.
Well, they have, they, the executive director is making an effort to try to get to every single municipality, but obviously, there's 72 municipalities in York County. So he's trying to get in front of all of those governing boards and make an introduction and talk about the challenges that they're facing, but obviously, that's-
No, it was interesting, because they were Shrewsbury, right? Were you the one, you had Shrewsbury?
So out of 72 municipalities in 2025, two did not sign the housing agreement. So 70 out of 72 signed. So there is support for it, but that model's kind of evolving, and their needs are changing.
I just have one, I guess, quick question. They have one officer?
They have one, yeah.
So if there was 1,983 criminal, or animal welfare checks done in 2024, that's over, almost 38 a week?
These do involve, yeah.
That's-
But we pay for a, what's he do? An animal control officer?
Yeah, a control officer. Yeah, and that's basically, the only thing we're paying there is just a retainer fee, which is a couple hundred dollars, and then it's per occurrence. So if you don't use them, you don't, you don't pay them.
But what does he do, actually do?
If there would be any need for animal control.
Okay, like a wild possum in the back?
Yeah, we'll get into wild animals.
Oh, they don't?
Yeah.
That's USDA.
They don't, they don't do anything either.
The game commission will not either, lawsuits.
Yeah, because I called them on foxes, and they don't do any-
It's against pretty staggering numbers.
And then the last thing is the York area tax. Public comment.
I have a question.
Sure.
This will be quick. Two years ago, a truck hit MedEd pole between my house and my neighbors. It's actually on their property. It splintered and it's leaning. And MedEd came out the day after we asked, after they put the new pole in, we asked why they hadn't removed it. And they said they can't until the people that have lines on there remove their lines, okay? When I called the borough first, they said, we can't do anything about that. But when MedEd came, they said, well, your borough has lines on that pole. So the borough did remove their lines, but there's still someone else who has lines on there. Now, granted, they said, well, that pole could stand for years, but what if it comes down? So could you contact whoever still has lines on there and get them to move them to the new pole? Because MedEd said they'd come out right away and take the pole away if the lines are removed.
Never, you're at the mercy of Comcast and Verizon to do that, and they have no urgency.
What if it's a matter of a health situation where I told you, I've got that big unit that's just hanging by its and if that falls down and hits somebody on the sidewalk as they're passing, or the guy's car that's sitting there?
Which, was it a transformer?
Yeah, it's, I don't know what it is. You guys looked at it, what was it? Did you look at it?
Who?
You.
It's part of, it's part of the cable stuff.
Yeah, I, I guess-
We have no, we have no recourse to go after them. We have no way of-
No, but just to inform-
They, they're-
Who, we don't, who do you know how to inform? It's been that way for two months now.
Okay, well, I wish, I wish this was an easy fix, but again, municipalities have no authority to enforce how utility company maintains their poles.
But don't you know what equipment on the lines belongs to who?
Well, you can look at-
Is it? I can't, I don't know.
But Comcast and Verizon have no urgency. I mean, we have telephone poles that are in the middle of streams that are leaning. They have, as Mrs. Russell was saying, they have poles that were damaged and tied together. And I, you know, she is correct. Usually, it's, MedEd is waiting for the other utility, and they have no authority to push Verizon or Comcast or any other communication company to move those. And when they get around to it, they get around to it.
So to find out who it belongs to, you call all of them and have them come out and look at it?
We submit, we submit orders, we try to get a hold, but again, you're at their mercy. There's nothing saying that they absolutely have to do this.
There is a wire this big, this thick, out at the end of South Constitution at Main, and it's hanging down. If I jumped up, I could grab a hold of it. That's how low it is. When we had those major winds, it blew down.
Can we at least admit that someone capable of jumping?
Somebody capable of jumping. That's, that's, it's close though. Yeah, but I, I'm very concerned that somebody's gonna, if either one of those falls. Because, I mean, people walking around-
If the homeowner knows, I mean, if the property owner knows who has the lines on, they could even call and complain and ask the company to come and move their line. I mean, if that pole would happen to come down, when the mail person is delivering mail there, they're going to be killed.
Yep.
I mean, I don't mind making a call. I made the call to, you know, Sam and I talked about, but I made the call to MedEd. They were there the next day, and they said, ma'am, we've moved that pole if we could.
Do you know who the, who has the-
No, I don't know, I don't know lines.
See, that's my problem. I don't know if there's like one of the six lines that are above my house.
I just know it's only, I think it's only one more-
Their main lines.
Company that has a line now.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything we can do, because if they're main lines, they're not like- Like if they were going to my house, you could tell me, and I could call them, and they could move it, but I, you know, there's no, it's just a line running through. I don't know how, I don't, that's an interesting question, but I just don't know how to answer it.
Because, so the number that's on there doesn't have anything to do with whose lines are up there. They don't have to put any identification on the pole.
That's, that's just from MedEd, and they've already taken theirs, so.
Yeah.
Well, there's only two other people. The two cable companies, why don't you just call them directly, and just wing it?
But that, yeah.
I mean, you're going to get an answer somehow.
And the answer usually is-
They don't have to do anything, I know what you're saying.
Right, is-
Until somebody gets hurt.
It's on a work order, and they'll get to it when they get to it.
Well, at least, at least the word got me.
But maybe nobody's even notified them, is what I'm trying to say. It's been maybe four years now. The pole may not fall down for 10, who knows?
But it won't fall down next month for when the little window's open.
Yeah, right, with all these winds and everything, who knows? I mean, like I said, MedEd was out the very next day after the pole got hit to put in the new pole. And, you know, the people, several of the people put their lines on the new pole. It's only the one that slept there. And MedEd said they have no way of doing anything about it until the last line is moved. And what they said to me was, call the people whose lines are on there. So when they told me the borough's was, I called the borough, and they moved their lines. But the other line is still there. And unless nobody, unless nobody complains, we're not going to do anything. But you got to know who to complain to.
And lately, it doesn't matter whether you complain or not. Like he said, they get to it when they get to it, whether it's four months from now and somebody gets hurt.
I, you know, I guess, I guess the easiest thing to do is to call Comcast and report that their, the pole's going to fall and take out their line, see if they come out and look at it.
But I don't have Comcast.
Yeah.
Well, but if it's their line, then you're afraid it's going to affect your property or something.
Well, if it falls, it's not going to fall on my property.
Oh.
But it's not right, just because it's not my property, that I'm not concerned that if it does come down, somebody might get hurt. Property's definitely going to get hurt. It could land in the road.
My will. Well, that, that big thing out in front of my, out there beside my house, absolutely will.
I'll drive by and look at it, see if I can't figure it out. I'm not promising anything, but-
Like I said, I don't mind, I don't mind making the call to whoever the company is, but I don't know that.
Okay.
But thanks, that'll be a help.
Yeah, I will, but, you know. Anything else? I'm going to entertain a motion.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
On paper? On eyes?
We need to get together about that. I didn't know you were supposed to be in that. And I tried to give that, we tried to get that, we, it's just, it's-
Yeah, I had, I had a whole thing before.
That's why we kind of-
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing stoppers. I mean, even, you know, there are whole things right there on it.
I'm sorry?